We'll go ahead and open up our session today. Please silence to show off your cell phones. And if you would, please join us in the pledge. Senator Albertson with you.
All right, what a pledge we did.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or deletions? I know we have some, but.
Yeah, I have three additions on your agenda. Urbisaid materials for twenty-foot Urbisaid program, Lake County, Lake County Youth Mentoring Program, grant request of Department of Oregon Education, um, operating Oregon Emergency Management Services at the local level letter from the E O C A. And we have an update from Kimberly and her crew that I have forgotten to call her.
All right.
Well, that explains Melanie's uh-oh.
Sometimes I'm right out of my game and then some days I just.
That's so funny. I thought about confirming and I thought, no, I've got her email. She's got it somewhere.
Yeah.
It's nice to hear you're not perfect.
Well, you're not. No worries at all. Um, all right, um, public comment? And I guess with that, we will go to, what is the first item on our list? Should we just kind of open it up to some guests that we have here today? Oh, medicine.
Yeah, I would recommend opening it up to Mrs. Essie.
Yeah. Yeah, sure, absolutely.
We did reschedule it in fairness to Melanie. We had the snow hit last month. And so, um, that's probably what it was. It, you know, we just, uh, we had our whole winter packed into that one week.
Right. Yeah, no worries at all.
So, thank you for, uh, letting us, um.
Do you want to come up here?
Visit with you?
If you'd like, you're more than welcome to come upstairs to the seat.
Well, all three of us, we're gonna give you some information. So it's up to you, would you like to?
Okay.
I mean, we can be up close and personal. If you're good with that, we could pull three chairs up.
We don't, we don't mind. It's whatever you guys like.
Okay. Do you guys mind that?
Sure. And if you guys are comfortable removing your masks, that would be great.
It'd be more comfortable.
Yeah. Will I be blocking your camera?
Nope, not at all. I'm happy to have you on camera. Cause I was trying to figure out what I was gonna do there.
Chuck, we'll let you have the option.
I just, I have to leave the bills. Makes it.
I am the Grant County Public Health Director. So I just make sure this video doesn't circulate. Go current on data, it'd be great. Yeah, so, um, it has been a little while since we've been here in front of the commissioners to give you an update on the D D program. I, I think I do so informally in November often, but, you know, not this last November, which isn't the appropriate channel, admittedly. So.
And maybe in the, you don't like the Zachary Mills.
And you knew exactly what I was gonna say. So, is it Schullenberger?
Schullenberger.
Schullenberger, okay. Just the long U.
Hey, you're not the first person to ask that question.
Thank you. So, um, I am gonna give you like a one thousand foot, five-minute history of your D D program. Um, at the point that I remember. And if you wanna go back further than that, um, Mr. Essies could do that about thirty-five years. So, in around, um, I think two thousand and seven or so, six or seven, that's probably close enough, Lake County decided to give back their D D program to the state. You didn't really relinquish your role as the, um, authority. It's all packaged in with being the local mental health authority. It's just that you didn't want to operate it fully. Now Chuck can clarify. And so, uh, the state worked with an organization called E O S, Eastern Oregon Health Services Consortium. And E O S agreed to take over the contract for the D D program. And in two thousand and eight, E O S contracted with Community Counseling Solutions, uh, that had, has an office in Grant County to provide that service. Initially, it was both Harney and Lake that had, um, given up the D D program.
So what is D D?
Developmental Disability. I'm so sorry. Developmental Disability Program. And, uh, Chuck has been with the program since that time. Um, when C C S took it over. For a short period of time, it was the Grant County Mental Health Program. But Grant County, um, asked C C S to take over their mental health program. So Chuck, um, inherited C C S. That's probably the best way to say it, something like that.
You inherited me, yeah.
Yeah. Well, uh, we were lucky enough to inherit Chuck as, um, the employee initially was a part-time position. And it has became, since then, it's became a full-time position. And, um, and so C C S has been providing via Chuck, uh, the developmental disability services in Lake County since two thousand and eight. And gladly doing that. And then we've had a, a couple of, uh, well, one figure stunt of being your interim mental health program. We did that in around two thousand and sixteen or seventeen for about nine or ten months. Helped you transition from being a, it being a county program to where it resides now with the Lake Public Health District. So some familiarity, lots of fun drives, good visits. Beautiful county. Um, thank you for letting us be here. And we're gonna give you an overview of the D D program, um, give you an update. And then I wanted to give you some information that's going on at the state level. Happy to answer any questions that you might have around what it means to be the, the D D authority, developmental disability authority. Although I wanna be clear, it's not worded that way in statute. But you are, um, you are that as you are the local mental health authority. And I like to, um, for me, that's very important. I like the relationship with the commissioners and I like, um, the ability to talk with you about concerns and your willingness to take it on to the state level, um, when appropriate. So, Dustin and Chuck, would you guys mind just, could you guys do it more often than me? Just maybe provide a, a five-minute overview of what developmental disability the program is? Maybe Dustin can turn that over to you. And then, and then you guys can go into your report.
Okay, sounds good.
Add the specifics and then how COVID bills.
So primarily what we do down here is we do, um, services to individuals with developmental and intellectual and developmental disabilities. And the development of disabilities who like, you know, syndrome autism and that sort of thing. Um, we, we assist people at home with, uh, with getting their care needs met. We help families hire folks to come in and help them, help them meet those needs as well as if somebody needs an out-of-home placement. We, we help people find foster homes. We also assist people locating work. Uh, we also assist people if, if, if somebody needs a higher level of care even yet that might foster or, uh, like a group home outside of the area. So, um, so kind of some crisis-type services. If, if a family can no longer meet a kid's need or an adult's need. That's a, that's, that's a, just a real general overview of kind of, kind of what we do. And then we do case management to help attach those guys with services as well. So if they need help getting social security, get services for adult, adult family services, food stamps, medical cards, that sort of thing. We help with that. Uh, just general case management services in between. We meet with those folks at least, at least annually for just one case management. And people get in, any sort of paid service or if we meet monthly to, to quarterly with all of those families and coordinate those services and stay on top of them. Really focusing on, on developing plans that, that meet their, you know, that really cover state needs, risks of aspiration, dehydration through behavioral issues. And at a quality measure, sorry.
You're buying lunch.
So, yeah, that's, that's just a real general overview. We, uh, you know, um, you know, just trying to help people live, live independently, you know, really promote that independence for people. Do you want me to jump into the overview then too then?
Yeah, go ahead and, and, uh, do your.
I will share this with you guys.
Yeah, I haven't seen you Chuck since I think two thousand and nineteen, sometime mid-two thousand and nineteen. I think it was that last D D meeting we had a word with the library. But, yeah.
So I just, I keep the invitation open to the commissioners if you guys wanna come and join our.
Yeah.
D D advisory meeting. We do them quarterly. We've been a little behind with the pandemic.
Right.
But yeah, we want, we wanna get that deck on board. You know, it's a good way to kind of find out what's happening with services. And, you know, keep up with the changes. We've gone through a lot of change in the last five years.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, we'd really love it if we could get somebody to attend those.
No, yeah, we, I was, I attended a couple of them. And then, you know, when, when COVID hit, everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything went sideways. I didn't even know if anyone would even happen to meetings. But you were in the back of my mind. I was thinking, I gotta get in touch with Chuck again one of these days.
We got new commissioners here. But, yeah, Commissioner Williams has attended some of our meetings. Dan Shown was a board member before he retired. So he, he came pretty regularly, so I'm supportive of it.
Yeah, I, yeah, if you guys got main contact, we could get your, your information.
Yeah, I, I believe I'm, I don't think I'm on the list of his liaison.
You're, you're the mental health liaison.
Yeah, I'm the mental health liaison. So I, I was attending those meetings because of that. And, uh, but I don't know if we ever discussed being a board member or anything like that. Yeah.
Yeah, because I used to work with you four years ago. You used to be the watchman at Lake, you remember, right?
I, I watched security. You have boilers, that kind of stuff. That was my job.
I worked, I worked in the woolly plant there. And I did cleanup after everybody worked left. And that's how I remember you.
And goes way back before my time, but yeah. I'm reminded of this a lot.
All right, well, I'll, I'll jump into this. Um, we have about twenty-eight people that get, uh, developmental disability services in, in Lake County. And that fluctuates. I mean, we, we get up in the mid-thirties every once in a while too. So it kind of goes up and down. But right now, we have about twenty-eight people. Um, you'll see, I mentioned K plan there. And these are, these are people that get in home services. So these are people that, that we assist going out, developing ISP. We, we help hire somebody to, to work with in their homes. Some of these people live independently in the community as well. Um, or they might live in their family home. You know, we're, we're getting supports in there to give families rest that, and assistance to meet the individual's activities a day, you know, just general hygiene things, activities a day that they live. Financial management, those sort of things. And so we have, uh, five adults in Lake County that, that get that in-home service. And we have three children that are getting that, those supports. We have two adults in, in adult foster homes here and an adult foster home here in Lake County. And, um, in D D services, if people have the choice of where they can get their case management services, they just don't come to just us and it's a done deal. They have a choice to get their, their case management also through full access brokerage as well. And so anybody that comes into the, the program, we do what's called Choice Counseling. And we give them a choice whether or not they want services with us or, or with the brokerage. And, um, it's been about a fifty-fifty split here. People have, people have chosen about half and half. So there's about twelve people in the brokerage right now. And, um, then we also have three, three children and three adults that are in case management only. And those people we meet with annually. They haven't chosen to get any paid in-home services. They just say, yeah, keep us involved in case management in case we need anything. And we call them every year and do a follow-up development, a general plan of some things that they might want some assistance with, whether it's an application with social security or something like that. We, um, we're getting on a, um, you know, transition services to work on getting work through the school. What about that sort of, that sort of thing? And, um, then we have about, there's about thirteen personal support workers that are, um, have signed up to help those people around Lake County. They're with, by the families. And we, we pay, pay for the service that they do. Process time sheets and payroll, that sort of thing for them, right?
So does that, where does that money come from?
It comes from the state and Medicaid. So, so the state, um, it comes to the seventy-six percent match for Medicaid. And then the state, the state puts the other thirty, thirty-six or thirty-four percent in there, so. All right, during COVID nineteen, it's, uh, changed the way we do business. We typically do a lot of meetings with people face-to-face. Um, it's, it's kind of eliminated that. So we do all our case management right now. We're doing a lot of it via telephone or via video conferencing. So we've been doing a lot of video conferencing. Um, same with eligibility and ethics, where our eligibility specialist is, is based. And John Day typically does a lot of travel down here, but she's doing most of that from, from her office at this point in time. Again, via phone, taking those apps, helping people fill out paperwork, send it out for signatures, give them back and process it. Um, foster homes and group homes have been a little bit different. It's been a little harder to monitor. The state has said we can't go out into foster homes all right now. So we've, uh, we've had some folks, Chuck did one of the, did a licensing primarily with virtual. He went ahead and, and they, they took their phone around and walked through the house. He looked at stuff, looked at records remotely and that sort of thing. So again, we haven't been able to, it's been kind of bad for those families because we haven't been able to offer as much, much, uh, you know, support in between. Because we kind of, you know, we can, we can go out look at the records a little bit more typically and help, help keep it compliant.
It's, it's kind of difficult. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not normal.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's definitely been a pain for everybody.
Especially for people that have developmental disabilities and know how to shoot. It's extremely challenging.
I, I think our biggest thing, since we've just seen so many people, it's the socialization and our work ethic.
Yeah, we're just, we're social beings by nature.
Yeah.
More social beings on the planet.
Yeah, it's been, it's been really tough. Um, and so a lot of times, uh, some, sometimes we've had people drop records off. We review them at the office and give them back to them. We don't, we don't go out to the homes. We don't infect anybody of their kinds. Um, with those K plans, um, anybody that's in that service, we also have to do an annual needs assessment for each one of those people. It, it basically figures out how many support hours we can support somebody in the home, hire somebody to kind of assist. It also might put a foster care rate together. So on what we pay for a foster provider. And so we still continue to have to see people face-to-face with that. But the state has allowed us to. Um, if somebody doesn't have technology, we can let out, see them through a window or a screen door. We've, uh, we've also, they've also allowed us to do video for that. But not everybody has that technology. So some people we've had to go out, knock on the door, see them through the door, knock on the house.
On remote areas, even if they have the technology, they don't have the service or the ability to.
That we ran into that a lot. People have entered after they've got dial-up.
It's just learning off.
Absolutely. So anyway, we, uh, we also work with people to get vaccinated. Chuck did a lot of work with the health department there. So I'll, I'll let him give the update on the vaccinations and where we sit with all that with our folks.
So when the vaccine became available, you know, O D D, or the Department of Developmental Disabilities, one of us will reach out and work with, uh, public health. So we contacted all our personal service workers. Those are the people that are paid, provide support. And we contacted, you know, families and clients. And we got everybody that wanted to get a vaccination on the priority list and get them vaccinated. Public health has just been a stellar agency of the year to work with. You know, with the families and stuff that have been affected. They just raved about the support they've gotten from public health. And I just think you guys need to hear that.
Yeah.
I really enjoy the, the crew because they're across from my office over there in the Mary's building. So they've just been a stellar agency.
Judy, Judy Dawson and the whole.
Yeah, yeah, we're so, you know, lucky in this county to have such a wonderful group of folks. And I don't know how they keep up with everybody and the support they provide, but. So we, we've got everybody getting the vaccination. Quarantine, we've had a couple of people. We've had a couple of families that have had the quarantine. And, you know, some of the family members have tested positive. Everybody else had it, they were presumptive. So we've had one, uh, one personal service worker that was exposed and had to quarantine because they've become positive. And we've had a couple of our clients exposed that get through it okay. Fortunately, there hasn't been any complications, so. So they're kind of on that page now that everybody that's wanted that maybe can have a deal.
So, uh, I just wanted to maybe share with you a little bit some, uh, things that are going on in this legislative session. Uh, I'll just limit it specifically to developmental disabilities. There's a number of bills that we're tracking. Um, C C S is the Community Mental Health Program in Moro, Wheeler, Gillum, Grant. And then D D, Moro, Wheeler, Gillum, Grant in Lake County. Uh, so the bulk of these are mental health bills, but there are three, well, two in particular, uh, developmental disability bills that I think are worth following. Um, the, the biggest one isn't a bill. It's just the D D budget that, uh, you know, goes before the legislature like all budgets every year or every other year. The state a number of years ago decided to, uh, pay for D D services in the counties, um, based upon the, based upon what it would cost the state to provide the service in the county. So there was a big exercise that occurred, uh, around that. And the first year or two, state, the state paid it ninety-five percent. I don't know if they've ever paid it a hundred percent of what it would cost, but they paid the county at ninety-five percent. And then they paid it, then they dropped it to ninety percent. Now it's at eighty percent and they're talking, or eighty-five and they're talking about reducing it even lower, which, um, you know, you don't have to be Einstein to do the math and figure out that there's, there's a problem with that. And so we are hopeful. You know, like you just kind of find yourself in this vicious cycle of do you be thankful for what you get? Just that you get something at all? Or do you try to push back and fight for more and possibly lose, you know, lose more? Um, anyways, we are hopeful that we'll continue to get funded at the eighty-five percent that it won't drop. I do think if it does drop, that more counties are gonna be discussing the possibility of giving the program back to the state. So, so there's that, um.
Do you, do you mind on those bills, what are the bill numbers?
Yeah, I was gonna just quickly talk about the two that I think are, um, important directly related to what I just mentioned. This House Bill three sixteen, that's, um, Representative Mouse. Um, it is, uh, declaring emergency and asking the state V H S and this, and, um, the State Developmental Disability Office to study and make recommendations for a new funding structure for the community developmental disabilities programs.
They're just asking for the recommendation or for the study?
Yeah, for, uh.
There's no, there's no recommendation in it?
No, to make a recommendation for a new funding structure. And that that would be invited December thirty-first, week of two thousand and twenty-two, which we do support that. And I don't know that we wanna necessarily go away with the existing structure as is as much as we want the state. Cause I don't believe they're gonna put us back up to ninety or ninety-five percent. We just want the state to, um, to, uh, fund it fairly and.
So the leverage that Eastern Oregon could use is, as one body, we say, we're all gonna turn it back over to the state if you were in any way.
Yes, commissioners, right.
And I think we could pull that off. And I'll call about that today just to see what we can do about that.
Talk to the Eastern Oregon counties.
Yeah, I think that that would be great. I think, you know, um.
That's just to be.
Obviously more voices saying the same thing. It becomes much more powerful than when it's individual. You, Matilla County, did you, Matilla County give it back or did they have to give it back?
They had to give it back.
The program, yeah, that's not the best example. Some counties have given it back due to, due to funding. We just said we can't do it.
I know our county gave mental health back. So I'm assuming they gave, or public health back.
They gave public health back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did they give mental health back too?
No.
Okay. So they did give public health back?
They gave public health back.
So you're saying eighty-five percent is.
Fifteen percent shy of what it costs to, you know, operate the program.
Truly be the hundred percent.
So where does the fifteen percent make-up money come from?
It's, uh, generally it's reduced services. Yeah, I mean, you, you've got to pick and choose what you're gonna provide or the level that you're gonna provide enough. Now, if your cost of, I've just got to be candid. Somebody knowing, you know, this, if your costs to provide the service are less than the state's, then it's not necessarily, um, as big of a hit. But when you start getting into those wider margins, I mean, you, you know, you're just going to be, be operating it at a loss. At some point, you do think about ethics. Well, if you don't provide it, who will? And you think about, you start seeing the faces of the people and the families that are impacted. And that's, that's hard, being a social worker, um, knowing that some of those services wouldn't be well-provided or not be provided at all. Um, I think where, where C C S has some advantages over some other programs is that operating in four counties, five counties for D D, we can share the cost. So if I pick on Dustin right over there, he's a program manager. His costs get split five ways, which yields, you know, like there's a different economy of scale for him just being fully funded out of Grant County, where you are required to have a program manager per the administrative rules. So that's not a reason though to not raise the flag, because, uh, that's not the model everywhere. I mean, it's still a flag that's worth, that's worth raising to talk about equality and funding. And you should receive the same amount of funding as any other county because that's the way, you know, it was set up. And it provides greater services to your population. So you shouldn't be penalized for that. Does that answer your question, Commissioner? The second one that I would mention is, uh, something that's, well, probably near and dear to all of our hearts. We all know that having a job, um, you know, a reason to get up in the morning is super important for our wellbeing and, uh, makes it, makes it worthwhile sometimes if we have meetings and, and are giving back. So just, um, it's just, those are just very important fundamental qualities to having, for having a good quality of life. The employment program within developmental disabilities is incredibly important. It's, um, one of the foundational components of that program, of the program. They've had a lot of successes. So House Bill twenty-one fifty-one, um, is relating to employment for people with disabilities. It's establishing a task force on the state as the Model Employer Program for employment with people with D D, developmental disabilities. And it's one that I'm tracking and, and supporting. I think that it's very important. It'll be a great resource. It adds, um, to the work that we're doing in a good way. It brings an important program or facilitates and promotes it. So I hope to see that happen. The biggest piece though is the funding, just to be clear. Yeah, so, uh.
I, I certainly, uh, can relate to that. I, I know one person in this community who had a job before COVID. I don't think that job is there now because of COVID, due to restrictions and whatnot. That probably is in your D D program, I assume. And so that person's day has got to be pretty, pretty darn slow. And it's gotta be tough.
Yeah, no, yeah, uh, absolutely, Commissioner Schullenberger. It's, it's huge and it's, um, you know, it starts to, to quickly cross over into mental health, which is where I can absolutely, you know, dive off a cliff and talk to you for an hour about, um, again, quality of life, how that impacts depression. You know, the, the long-term impacts when you start looking at, uh, suicide, um, how it's impacting our nation, our state at so many levels, overdoses. So, I mean, the treatment, don't get me wrong, is really important. It's absolutely important. But, you know, like if we're gonna, like, that's, that's after the person has been identified as being at risk. So, so employment is the front end of, of a longitudinal problem. And, and that's where you're gonna find the most bang for your buck. is giving these people, again, the reason to get up in the morning. You know, what is the meaning that they're going to be bringing to their life to, you know, on that day and to other people around them? And social networks, you know, so on and so forth. Commissioner Williams spoke about that. And, and again, I'll just, like, you guys want to get out of here at a decent time. I just have some strong feelings about this.
Oh, well, I don't know if the question is so much whether or not we get out of here, it's a question of whether or not you get out.
It's, it's all fun conversations and so, so, yeah. And, and mental health is my background, inevitably. So it's, this is something that's important to me. And it was, it was a great experience being a part of what you guys did down here and the changes that were made in the mental health program. So unfortunately, Mr. Esten has decided that he wants to retire after, I don't know, it's like maybe forty years total, I'm not sure, but he's been working here in Lake County in a variety of capacities, at the mill, in law enforcement. And he was the Community Mental Health Program Director for a while. He likes did case management work, clinician work, mental health director work. I think that's where I first met Chuck, back in maybe nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand to two thousand and three. I knew Chuck through the mental health world, not through the DD world. And then, so he's had a couple of iterations here, different, different possessions, positions, and served Lake County well. Yeah, he announced his retirement and Dustin has been crying, I mean, you know, crying that Chuck has done an amazing job. I can't think of one complaint that I have had as the director since Chuck has, since I've been with Chuck or had the pleasure of working with Chuck. And that's been thirteen years now. So it, it is a testament to the quality of the work, his ability to connect and relate with people. It's not that there haven't been people that have been upset, I'm sure, you know, that there have been, but he's worked through those issues magnificently. And he will be incredibly missed, really not just for DD. When I want to know something about social services in Lake County, or if you want to, this is the guy to go to. He has the, I mean, he's a walking Wikipedia or encyclopedia for mental health and DD and addictions in Lake County. So we will not be able to replace him ultimately. That's where I'm going. We just hope to fill this position here in the next couple of months so that we can keep things going and continue to provide a great service. And we will miss him incredibly. So the position has been advertised. There are some applicants and they're looking at doing interviews.
Yep, next week.
Next week. So if you know of anyone that might be interested, it's not too, too late to turn in the application.
You're gonna be a challenge. Works out.
So there, there are some changes. And, and as, you know, with any change, sometimes there's some bumps or some hiccups. And just want to, you know, let you know of, of that and of those changes. And make sure before we leave, Dustin and I will give you our contact information so that if you hear of anything that's not going well, please do reach out to us. And I would just put in a plug on what Dustin and Chuck already said around the advisory board. I'd be happy to share with you the statutes that, that talk about your role as the Community Mental Health Authority or local mental health authority, but the advisory committee, it is required by statute that it occurs, which these gentlemen keep it going. And, and it also defines the county's role in that. And we just, we, we do value your presence, your input. Appreciate it when you can participate. If there's anything that we can do to better support you in that, we're happy to do that. It's a nutshell. Yes, do you have any questions for us or comments or concerns or?
We have any questions, Chuck, I'm gonna miss you. I've been actually kind of looking forward to getting back and seeing you this, this year and seeing more of you, but yeah.
I'll be there for you. I'll be around. Will there be an opportunity for you to have a little overlap with the in-person?
Yeah, we're planning for a couple of months of shadowing and training.
Yeah, we're hoping to have some together by neighbors to just have a couple of months.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My career started right here in the courthouse. Now it also is like a few offices downstairs here in the basement. That's where we started. I didn't actually have an office, so. I started, we started the first program here was the state hospital started downsizing and getting, getting people back in the community and homes. And that was my role to start setting that up. And that's kind of part of the beginning of deinstitutionalization, as they say, so. Back in nineteen eighty-eight, so. Had a couple of decades in mental health here, broken climate for a stretch. Been doing this for the last thirteen years.
So you went into mental health after, after working with me at Somme? Is that what you're hitting on?
I, I paid my dues. I actually worked two jobs for six and a half years. I took this job with the county, it was originally county, and I've seen many things go up and down with services. And I still work, and I worked nights at the mill, so I continue that. And so I did that for like six and a half years, breaking into the pool.
Amazing voice.
Well, very best wishes to you. You guys plan on staying around?
Yeah, I do want to travel some, but the world's kind of closed down, so. I got places I want to go and it's just hard to plan anything right now. I'm just gonna take it a day at a time.
Best wishes to you guys. Really, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
So Kimberly, are you heading back right away?
I am, but I'll leave you my cell number and if you don't already have it, I'll, you know, decide to tell you.
I do have it. I did find it just yesterday, so.
I am available. I, I do need, I have a nursing home outbreak in Grant County, so I'm gonna, I gotta get back for a meeting for that. And then back on to Hutton, but just give me a call. I'm really curious to hear, you know, whatever it is.
We'll be in touch.
So, yeah, so that sounds good. So my cell phone number, five four one nine eight zero eight five five one.
Nine eight zero what?
Eight five five one. I get calls day and night. You're welcome to call. I do ask if it's not an emergency that you wait till six in the morning. The two AM calls I do, I do answer.
Oh, we don't, we don't beat two AM calls, so, so, right.
And Dustin, do you mind sharing your cell number with us?
Yeah, well, we are recording, so you guys can just write it down and we'll, we'll get it, we'll share it. So, I don't know, unless you've put your plan with Plin in on YouTube.
So I don't know if it's that popular, but thank you, James.
It is on YouTube.
I'll be also like the five four one.
Yeah, five four one.
Yeah.
There is the Hutton office, but I do travel a lot by choice. I like to be out and about. And so that was.
Kimberly, I did catch your last name.
Lindsay, like the girl's first name.
Thank you. All right. Okay, thanks. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks to all of you. Good to see you. Nice to meet you, of course.
Thank you.
Hopefully this don't remember.
Yeah.
But I am seeing, and nice to see you all, and thanks for letting us kind of drop in.
I'm busy doing Zoom stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we, we want to get off Zoom and see our fellow commissioners and get back to town a bit, so.
Just right back here, Chuck.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much again, and you guys be safe driving, driving back and, yeah. Really appreciate it. Good meeting you and Chuck, we'll see you around.
And we'll see you soon.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll see you guys.
Post on the advisory meetings.
All right, sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Take care.
See you. All right, we have, we have the time lining for ten thirty. We're a few minutes over. Clarence, Vincent, you're more than welcome too.
Well, it's good to be in front of you folks. I mean, first time I've ever been in front of commissioners, I would presume it.
Put you in the hot seat.
Yeah. So I don't really know what the format is. Is it just kind of a meet and greet, I guess, and?
Yeah, it's whatever you want it to be. Obviously, you know, I mean, Collins is really important to us. It's one of our bigger employers in Lake County. And making sure that the mill has a future here is really important to the commissioners. And obviously, it's also important because we own a railroad that helps support Collins Mill and Collins Mill supports the railroad. So it's a, it's a real community effort, honestly, and we want to make sure that you guys stick around, so.
We will, and that would be my intent. I mean, since my wife and I have been here, not even quite a month yet, wonderful people and that I've met down at the mill and in the community. I mean, just been impressed with the friendliness of everybody and how helpful folks are. And, and the mill, you know, like you said, you work down there. You know, there's a lot of potential there. And one of the things that I'm happiest to see about is the log supply and these trucks rolling in. I mean, I can't think the last time I was at a mill where, in this time, just before going into breakup, and we're getting forty-five, fifty loads a day. And it's like, this is, this is good. It's more trucks than I've seen. So I was up at Port Angeles running a hardwood mill before this opportunity came up. So it's, it's good. There's a bunch of things that I don't know yet, like about the twenty-one inch.
DVH.
Yeah, DVH and that. You know, by the next time I get to.
That's going away.
Yeah, it's going away and that's what we were talking about, so, yeah.
Yeah, and the impact on the mill. I mean, I don't have a good solid answer for you folks yet, but I'm sure I'll have this opportunity again and want to, you know, get any answers to the questions you, you folks might have. So, and I don't know how often you'd like to have an update, but I'll give you my contact information before I leave today. Any questions about, like I said, I'll get the answers for you.
I mean, I just know that Collins has properties not only here, but also California.
Correct.
And they have a pretty bad wildfire season around the Susanville area and around Quincy and some of that country. Hopefully, the company's still good status with timber down in that country too. You got the business over Clamath, you know? Temperate spread out.
And Commissioner, at this point in time, I mean, I know we got a plant there, I know we got a plant in Chester and went back in Kane, so.
Yeah, Chester's mill's really awesome, so.
Yeah, that's what I've heard. Haven't had the opportunity yet to, to go down there, but I'm sure that time will come.
Yeah, glad to have you here.
That's, like I said, it's a nice community and I can't say enough about the folks I know. So, no, happy to be here.
Yeah, and as far as as often as you'd like to do these, I've, we've never had Collins Mill update formally in a meeting, I think, since we've, since I've been here.
Okay.
And Commissioner Albertson. So really, honestly, just feel, feel welcome anytime to come to the courthouse, to come see us, to call us, if there's ever anything that you'd like to talk to us about, ask questions or if there's issues with the railroads or whatever, we're always here.
Okay.
We want to be good neighbors and make sure that we have a good relationship with Collins.
Well, and that's the way I'm kind of wired. Every place I've been, it's been the same way. Like being involved in the community personally and, you know, the mills that I've worked for. So, good, not looking forward to it.
Perfect.
How many employees are you guys employing now?
We're currently, seventy-eight is the total, I believe is the number that I heard. It's right at seventy-eight to eighty, including salaried and, and all the hourly folks.
Not counting, not counting truckers?
No.
Yeah.
No.
So those are additional on top of that. If you get fifty trucks a day.
At least a dozen trucks going.
Yeah, I would say at least that. Yeah, so.
Support a good hundred jobs or so.
Yeah, well, lumber markets are, you know, some products all-time highs right now. So it's a good time to be producing one-inch boards, I know that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
Do you guys have any plans of expanding the mill? What, putting in a chip? Any kind of fab lumber?
I haven't heard any rumblings of that yet. You know, that'll be something. There's a question, I'll get an answer for you. But one of the things, if you're familiar with that small log breakdown, it's, it's in the mill down there. It's, it's not living up close to its potential. And there's a huge opportunity to gain more volume out of the mill without, you know, we just need to get that thing up and running, right, or correct. And we've got, actually, this weekend, we got one of the vendors coming in that was one of the original designers for the equipment to come in and start working on it so we can get more throughput. Because, I mean, you can do the math till you're blue in the face. And I mean, sixteen foot, you know, ponderosa pine, ten inch diameter log, I guess, you know, call it fifty feet in it or whatever. You know, if you can do ten pieces a minute, it adds up in a hurry. Right. So, and as of this morning, when we started up and running, just a little bit under six pieces a minute. So there's a huge potential.
Right.
So.
Yeah. Do you guys, have you thought about cutting for grade on the large log?
Yes, Henry is cutting for grade.
It is cutting end grade.
That's an internet, as a former grader, I'll just share this, but in the grader, we cut, we last week on some logical planer, it was eighty percent tuned better.
Oh, nice. Yes, that's incredible.
It, yeah, it, it really is.
On logical?
Yes.
Taking in logical.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, that's the best I've ever seen.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty dang good.
Yeah.
That's.
So that was, and the mill set, well, actually, yeah, the mill set a piece count record a couple of weeks ago, thirty-four thousand pieces. Getting through there. So, I mean, there's, you know, you see those little spikes of, of promise and, and others there. And so does everybody else. What I've observed so far, the three-plus weeks I've been here, labor is an issue. You know, that's, that's a definite challenge.
Do you have jobs available right now?
Yes, we do.
How many openings averaged?
I'm going to say we've got probably right now at least five. You know, and that would be entry level to skilled physicians.
Right.
So if we could, you know, I mean, good electrician, you know, TLC type of guy, skilled miller, I mean, those positions are filled. But as, as you're well aware, I mean, a big troubleshooter, man, that'd be, be worth a lot.
Well, I mean, you need to plan for the future too. I mean, back in the day, you couldn't get a job at Collins unless someone died or retired. And now you've got five job openings and some of those experienced guys and your electricians and other things, you know, they start retiring. I mean, to have someone to replace them with.
Yeah, exactly.
It's good to bring them in before that day comes.
It would be very good day on day, so.
There's a lot of old machines in that place that, you know, and I, I kind of hear through the grapevine that Collins is making some pretty big investments in a lot of the machinery and the equipment. And that's really good to hear.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a correct statement. So, yeah, and that'll, that'll actually continue throughout, throughout the remainder of this year. There's been a good financial commitment for projects. Matter of fact, that's Maintenance Superintendent and I were working on that yesterday and again this afternoon, so.
Wonderful. Yeah, it's very good.
Some of the headlines out there are on severance tax for timber, which I assume would be terrible for the industry.
Yeah, and I, and I got to be honest, Commissioner, for just a little bit about that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
You know, for once now, the timber market's up. Now everybody wants your money.
Yes, exactly, yeah. Got to tune it up.
Similar to the cattle business or other things. Somewhere to the cattle business or other things, so.
Sure. Yeah, I, I don't really have any other questions.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, well, like I said, glad to be here, and I did bring some cards, so you guys will have my information.
Excellent. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I get one of those from you?
You sure can.
Thank you.
Thanks. Here Clarence, if we do.
Please. Thank you.
You bet.
You guys had ever liked to, uh, come down and see what we're up to, feel free.
Sounds good, thank you so much, I still got my helmet, so.
Okay, I'll see you guys later. Do you? We needed it back.
The, the guys gave it to me, it's got everyone's name on it.
Oh, cool.
So, yeah, but, uh.
How long ago did you work down there?
Uh, just before I took office, uh, two years ago.
Okay.
So, I, I left in the end of December of eighteen.
Huh.
And started here January second.
Alright.
Yeah, but no, thank you so much for coming by, really good seeing you.
We'll see you guys, nice meeting you.
Take care. Um, alright, uh, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda, uh, herbicide material, uh.
Are you gonna go straight to herbicide?
I don't know, uh. It was the first thing on my additions, so I, I just figured my.
Those were nice visits, so.
Very good.
I hope.
Yeah. Seeing Kimberly again was really cool, that was shocking, I looked over and I wasn't sure who everyone was, but then I caught her eyes, and I was like, oh, I know who that is. And, uh, I think I was struggling with disbelief actually there for a moment, that was good to see. So anyway, yeah, we went over this yesterday on, uh, the potential for Wilbur Ellis, um, quote, uh, their quote, uh, for herbicides. Uh, recommendation to accept the quote from Wilbur Ellis from our road superintendent. Under Rule Nine. Given the lack of other vendors. I'll entertain a motion on it unless there's any discussion.
I'll, I'll, uh, make the motion to accept the bid from Wilbur Ellis LLC, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars for Lake County herbicide material to be used this twenty-twenty-one field season. Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to accept the bid, uh, from Wilbur Ellis for the, uh, herbicide treatment of a fiscal impact of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. Uh, we will accept this on Rule Nine, uh, for, and, uh, that'd be it, if there's any further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Uh, next up. Um, Lake County Youth Mentoring Program grant request with ODE.
Do you wanna do?
Oh, let's go to the oil treatment, yeah, let, we can go ahead and do that. Uh, surface oil treatment, um. Now, we talked about this, uh, between going with either Albina asphalt or Idaho asphalt, um. The recommendation from our road superintendent is to go with Albina. Do I have a motion on the table or?
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for surface oil treatment of one million, ninety-five thousand, sixteen dollars from Albina asphalt. Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded to accept the bid from Albina asphalt for a fiscal impact of one million, ninety-five thousand, sixteen dollars, uh, as they came in as the lower bid below Idaho asphalt, any further, uh, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
That fell under Rule Nine too.
Yeah, you're right, you're correct, that would fall under Rule Nine because of lack of vendors, thank you for that. We should probably make sure that that motion states that, or at least it captured in the minutes that that's why we made, how we made it, why we approved it. Um, okay, so the next thing. I don't know why. Yeah. I'm just reading, it's fine, this is, this is all on me, sorry, okay, uh, do we wanna go down to the, uh, uh, let, let's go ahead and take care of the Lake County Youth Mentoring Program grant request from ODE.
I'll make a motion to.
Sorry.
One more?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant request from ODE Youth Development Council for a fiscal impact of sixty thousand, thirty thousand for each year.
Second, uh, motion's been made and seconded to approve and, uh, or to adopt the, uh, plan as written for the Lake County Youth Mentoring Program grant request, uh, with ODE and Youth Development Council, um. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so now we do have the, um, uh, Oregon Cattlemen's membership.
Make the motion to, uh, join the Oregon Cattlemen's Association paying the so, associate council level of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, showing as Lake County Commissioner says, members. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, um, to, uh, accept, uh, go for a membership with the Oregon Cattlemen's Association, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carries. Doesn't sound like there's gonna be any opposition.
Do you guys wanna assign a contact person?
Uh, good question.
So, I was thinking about that yesterday, um, since it kinda falls into the natural resources, well, there's all natural resources, which is very gonna be the ways home for them.
You agree with that?
Yeah, I assume we're all three of us though could attend meetings.
Yeah. Be good. Alright.
Happy to do so.
Uh, Wolf Depredation, uh, uh, Compensation Committee application, uh, from Rodney Ferry, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Make the motion to accept the application of Rodney Ferry for the Wolf Committee, Lake County, second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Rodney Ferry will be on the board, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up, uh, we've got ASA Committee application, we have four applications, um, Sue Inglesby, Ross Callahan, John Jones, and Keith Little. But I know I've asked this before, should we approve those separately or all together as a slate? Probably would, we can probably do it as a slate, okay. Go ahead, sir.
I, so I only have three.
Yeah, I have.
I think it's four, right?
Sue Inglesby.
So you can make the motion while I do it?
There you go, that's Sue Inglesby, just so you, you can see it too.
So I'll make a motion to accept the applications through the ASA Advisory Committee from Ross Callahan, John Jones, Keith Little, and Sue.
Inglesby.
Inglesby.
Thank you. Uh, okay, motion on the table?
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, those four lovely people are on our advisory committee. Operating OEMs at local level, uh, letter for, from EOC. We, uh. I have, I have a copy of it, I brought it with me, so do we wanna sign on to this, I guess, and we can have some discussion on it, yeah, that was kinda.
You wanna give a background quick for the paper?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Figured we'd get there, um, so this is a letter to Governor Brown, uh, Director Pat Allen and Director Andrew Phillips, uh, with Oregon Works and Sea Management. Um, Phelps, Phelps, sorry, um, thank you, the, um, the letter is basically requesting, um, we can give the press a copy of this letter, if they'd like to see it, uh, basically.
The press would, yes.
Yeah, that's, okay, sounds good, we'd be requesting, uh, more local control, um, over, uh, COVID-nineteen pandemic at this point, uh, being that we've kind of gone through this, uh, our, our health district and our, um, locals, our agencies and everyone here in the county, we've, we've, we've learned pretty well, we've, uh, we've taken on a lot of these challenges together and coordinated properly. And so, we feel like at this point that it's important that we start looking, look more local control. And, um, we've had a good year of counties basically, um, developing and cementing how we do business and how we work together as a team in cohesion, and we'd like to really start that conversation now to where this isn't just a, um, ru- regs, rules, and, uh, direction that's coming down from the top, uh, we'd like to have that local control, uh, being that we've kind of learned how to manage a lot of these situations. And so, EOC, uh, Eastern Oregon Counties has put together a letter, and a lot of the counties are signing on to it, and the question is whether or not we want to, uh, uh, add our signatures. A lot of the counties, uh, there have, you know, it has unanimous support, um, I guess there's maybe a couple of counties that, uh, only partial board support, so it's kind of a decision that individual commissioners can decide whether or not they wanna put their name or add their name to the letter.
Do you mind if I ask, and you don't have to answer, but do you guys have any kind of, um, thought as to what the chances are that this request will be granted? Any predictions there?
No idea.
Okay. Thank you.
It starts the conversation.
Yeah.
And shows.
So, just to get the discussion, do we have to have a motion first?
Uh.
I think this is just consensus.
Yeah, yeah, we can probably just do consensus, so, oh, completely open for discussion.
So if we sign this and, uh, the governor accepts, um, are there any known benefits from the state that we've been no longer received?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because it looks like everything's stood down since pretty much the fall of twenty.
I think it might, it might encourage a look at the extreme high and moderate risk level, um, just structured to where we would have.
Enforcement.
Yeah, and what that all looks like at the local level.
Alls that's really asking is give the local government a voice to dictate their own future. So.
Yeah, I think like Willlau County, for instance, you know, they gave their public health, uh, back to the state, but, um, so the state manages it. But for us, we're still the public health authority, and I think, you know, as we've kind of gone through this and working with the health district and all the other parties involved in our schools, and I think we, I think that, that needs to kind of come back to a local level. Just my thoughts, um, or at least start the conversation as to what that looks like, because I'm uncomfortable, um, personally with, uh, um, I, this has brought this back to it, it's related, um, with all the bills that have been presented in this legislature where they declare an emergency. And I think, uh, you know, we've prolonged the emergency again, and we keep continuing to to put this into the governor's hands, and, uh, and I'm not sure that that's where we should be long-term. So I think it's important to kind of revisit the conversation. It isn't that there isn't concern or that there isn't things to worry about, it's just.
Well, like the last sentence, state agencies continue to be a critical partner in support of county, county operations, however, these tasks are in support of county operations, and state emergency operations have long since ceased. We may still need to lean on the state at some point on a level in the future, but at this point, we're, we feel confident that we can move forward as far as our plan with Ken, related to the pandemic. I personally won't want my name on the letter.
Okay. Okay. Whatever you guys wanna do, I'm, 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 I'm gonna put my, my name on the letter if, uh, there's consensus from the board. I, I just feel like it's important for us to do it, um, together, and, uh.
I know all the board of the county planned it.
Yeah, they did that yesterday on their meeting.
I'm, I'm on the side.
Okay, sounds good, uh, consensus is only, Lake County Commissioners would like to sign off to the letter, so. If, or, I guess, this is just kind of the draft of the letter, but they've got one.
That they're gonna put our electronic.
They're gonna, they're gonna just put all of our electronic signatures on, okay, so we'll have to get those electronics and signatures to EOC. I, I think they have mine, they have yours, um, I don't know if they have theirs. Right, so, Commissioner Schulberger, I don't know if they have yours, your electronic signature, so that'll be.
Well, they'd better pick up.
Alright.
Uh, I, again, you know, just for the record, I like, I like what it says, we will be managing the incident at the local level until either local operations are suspended or the incident escalates beyond local capabilities. We will continue to depend on the state for technical expertise and logistical support. I think that pretty much sums it up.
Yep. Is, is there anything in the letter that you'd like to change? I didn't ask that question, so I figured, figured.
I'm good.
Okay, sounds good.
Alright.
Um, that being settled, we'll move on to the next, um. I think we only have one more thing to do, that's, uh, three minutes. So we have work sessions from March second and March third of twenty-twenty-one, um, anything, motion on the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the work session minutes and the regular session, kept them separate. And work session, and regular session minutes from March third, twenty-twenty-one, as presented, second.
Uh, motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes from, uh, March second and March third of twenty-twenty-one, uh, both work session and regular session, uh, any, uh, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries.
So, we handled the contract with that, right, yesterday, and so.
Yeah, we, yeah, it was just a ratification, so, yeah, we. But.
Yeah.
You don't have anything else? So, is there any liaison updates?
I have something, but I'm ready. Washed.
I am gonna go head-to-head and just say I, I'm, I wrote a letter last night, uh, for, just, I'm tweaking it this morning, uh, to the hospital in the health district on, uh, regarding our mental health contract. So I will likely C C, uh, you both in that email, um, so that you're able to see it, um. And, uh, I'd like to just, uh, the main purpose of the email is to make sure that we can kind of initiate a conversation between the CEO of the Health District and, uh, and us, as we'll be looking at the mental health contract in the future, and we want to just kind of make sure that we can get any questions that are out there answered, and, uh, make sure that we, now we have a full, uh, administrative change here at the county board. We'd love to make sure that that relationship is transparent, so, just wanted to throw that out there. I sat on the letter last night a little bit and just thought about it, glad I did, I, yeah, I rewrote a few things this morning, and, uh, just figured I'd let you guys know. I don't have anything other than.
I think, uh, we all are aware of our, our water condition report, or our water conditions here in Lake County. Uh, we've seen, uh, Clamath County declare a drought emergency already, declaration anyway, and, uh, it's something that we are requested to be briefed on here in the next session.
Yeah. We'll have the water master here, and maybe even Daniel Kay, we can talk about that declaration. All right, um, with that, we will adjourn the meeting at eleven fourteen. Thank you.